Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting from May 11, 2023 to order. If you can, please join me for a pledge of allegiance and salute to the state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, when nation under God and in the world, where liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag and the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among the United States.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item of the agenda is going to be approval of the regular meeting agenda. I would like to make a motion to move under resolutions, I believe it's item V, which would be consideration of resolution R-23-30, a resolution appointing members to the Hila Regional Medical Center Governing Board. I'd like to move that after any action necessary, or yeah, any action, after any action necessary as a result of the closed executive session?
Second.
I'd like to make an additional suggestion.
Yes, ma'am.
That we move commissioner reports to after item V.
After item V?
Uh huh. After the resolution on the GRMC board.
Perhaps we could just do two.
Oh, we could do two.
Add extra commissioner reports.
Because I think there will be some conversation after we appoint.
So move commissioner reports after?
V, just before our term.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and amend my motion to move two items. I'm going to move item V after the executive session, after any action necessary. And also I'd like to move or add, or add or move. And I'd also like to move commissioner reports after the appointment of the Hila Regional Grant County Board. Hila Regional Board of Trustees.
I'll second that.
So I made a motion, I have a second by Commissioner Edwards. Do we have any discussion? See no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, moving on to next item on the agenda is going to be public hearings, hearing on ordinance numbers O-2304. And I'm not going to read the whole, the whole ordinance there, but do I have a motion to open up a public hearing?
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Brown, I have a second by Commissioner Billings. Do we have any discussion? See no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries, we are now in a public hearing. During this public hearing, first thing would be, do we have Mr. Carrasco first? Or do we have, would we have Mr. Carrasco first? Give us a little presentation, after that, anybody willing to testify, please let me know. Mr. Carrasco.
Thank you. Chairman, members of the commission, good morning. I'm Luis Carrasco, as I think most of you know, with the Rhodey Law Firm in Santa Fe, serving as loan counsel to Grant County in this proposed transaction with the New Mexico Finance Authority. And as I think most of you know, I'm also a Grant County native, so especially proud to be serving in this role for the county. And it's great to see you again after a few years, I think, since I've been down here. You have the for you ordinance number zero, or O-2304, which approves a loan from the New Mexico Finance Authority in the amount of $1,084,911 to construct a pre-engineered metal building to serve as a new fire station for the Dos Criegos subdivision for use by the Pinos Altos Volunteer Fire Department. It's a, it's a rather straightforward ordinance, although lengthy. It essentially does a few things. It approves the form of a loan agreement and intercept agreement for this transaction. The loan agreement obviously spells out the terms for the repayment of the debt from the pledged revenues, which are the state fire protection funds, dollars that come to the county from the state treasurer's office. And the intercept agreement, which allows the, the state treasurer to send the monies that are required to repay the debt directly to the finance authority, which is a, a normal procedure that they do for these public project revolving fund projects. As I mentioned, the ordinance specifically pledges those funds to the repayment of this debt. This is a special and limited obligation of the county, which means it's not a general obligation. So the only recourse the finance authority will have for the repayment of this debt are these specific fire protection funds. There's no ability to force the county to impose additional taxes to repay it. Simply the amounts of dollars that are available in that fund to the county are what you are pledging and will be liable for. As I mentioned, it also authorizes the state treasurer to redirect those funds directly to the finance authority to pay the debt. It, the ordinance also approves the construction and acquisition of the building itself. It sets the maximum interest rate on the, on the debt to the statutorily provided maximum of 12%. Although the final pricing for this debt was finalized last week. And so the interest rate on this debt will be 3.328585%, well below that statutory maximum. And the term of the debt is for 30 years. And the final payment will, the first payment will be May 1, 2024, and the final payment being May 1, 2053. There is a debt service schedule attached to the form of the loan agreement also, spelling out exactly for each year what the amounts that are due. So I think that sums up the ordinance generally. And I'm of course happy to answer any questions that the chair or any member of the commission may have about the debt.
So I'm trying to, give me a minute, feels like a Monday. And I know we've gone through this before, but it's a little bit more for me and for the public. So if down the road, state funding gets lower or stops to come in like it should, how responsible would be, would Grant County be on paying this?
You're specifically pledging only the dollars that you get, get, get from that fund. So if it reduces, those are the only amounts available. The ordinance does allow, and the loan agreement also does allow a renegotiation, if necessary, to, you know, revise the terms to make sure that everybody's happy and can live with the changed circumstances. But as of now, you're not putting anything else on the line other than those debts. The finance authority also did an analysis, and they wouldn't be moving forward with this loan if they didn't feel comfortable that the pledged revenues were going to be sufficient to meet the annual debt service amount. And they've established a baseline of 125% of what the annual debt service would be. And in each year that you have payments due, you are expected, the, those revenues are expected to be in excess of the 125%.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, do we have anything else?
No.
Thank you. Now, would anybody like to testify concerning this ordinance?
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioners, can I have a motion to close this public hearing, please?
Make a motion to close. Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Medina, I have a second by Commissioner Brown. Do we have any discussion? See no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is going to be consideration of Grant County ordinance number O-2304.
Chairman, ordinance O-2304?
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Brown, I have a second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? See no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, county manager, for all the detail and attention you guys put into this. Next item on the agenda is going to be public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item and more debt may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are in the county manager's office. Do we have anyone for public speaking? There's, should be a white button there that you need to push.
Randy.
Is it?
It's on.
It's on, Mrs. Baldwin.
Fine, thank you. James Baldwin, resident of Grant County. The last time I spoke with you people, it was regarding the name of a road which runs northwest of town out toward Bear Creek. And I mentioned that there were two separate and distinct governmental agencies that both give the road the same name. And a few days later, I was having coffee with a group, and one of the people at the group said, here, take a look at this. This is the New Mexico Atlas and Gazetteer. And on page 45 of the New Mexico Atlas and Gazetteer, it has Grant County. And it also has for Grant County, a road leading northwest of Silver City, going out toward Bear Creek. And the name of that road is Bear Mountain Road. I can't walk up there, but I can let Randy look at it to verify. When I paid my taxes on the first of the month, I stopped by the county manager's office, and I wished to speak with the county manager who was occupied. I did speak with one of the personnel, and the person said, after I explained what I wanted to talk about, the person said, well, we'll call you back. We have caller ID. I did not receive a call from the county manager's office or anyone associated with the county in regard to this. And this is in regards to, I hate to say, if you remember on September 9/11 of 2001, we had the Twin Towers. 9/11, 2001. Right now, we have 5/11, 2023. Those two events are somewhat similar insofar as they're destructive to the United States of America. And I wanted to speak to the county manager about that, to see what could be done to notify and help the citizenry of Grant County protect itself and protect the county. I hope that the county will not, I hope the county will not permit any of the illegals, migrants or whatever, go through. There have been two large white buses seen going through town, heading west on Highway 180. And they were not photographed, but they were observed by local residents, and they were probably carrying people someplace. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Do we have anyone else for public speaking? Anyone else for public speaking? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next item of the agenda is going to be proclamations. We're going to have three proclamations, consideration of National Hospital Week proclamation, consideration of Grant County Nurses Recognition Month proclamation, and consideration of National EMS Week proclamation. So I'm going to turn this meeting over to Commissioner Medina. Thank you.
Chairman, I asked Commissioner Edwards to do the hospital week.
Okay.
County of Grant proclamation. Whereas Hila Regional Medical Center has served our community with integrity, compassion, accountability, respect, and excellence. And whereas GRMC physicians, nurses, healthcare providers, and volunteers are recognized during National Hospital Week. And whereas GRMC proudly gives their best to all of the patients in the community. And whereas GRMC continues to safely meet the needs of patients and employees alike. And whereas GRMC maintains its commitment to serving the region by continually reinvesting in facilities, technology, and people in order to provide the highest levels of care. And now therefore, the Grant County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 7 through the 13th, 2023, as National Hospital Week. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the proclamation for National Hospital Week.
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Edwards, I have a second by Commissioner Billings. Do we have any discussion? See no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So we have some folks here to accept this proclamation. We'd like to meet them down in front and have a photo.
Madam Clerk, do you do have a copy of this, right? Okay, Commissioner Medina?
County of Grant proclamation. Whereas no clinic, healthcare provider, or hospital in Grant County would be able to provide exceptional healthcare to our communities without, without our nurses. And whereas it takes a very special person to do all the nurses are asked to do, and do it with the care and compassion that nurses provide to patients each and every day. And whereas our nurses have given all that we've asked of them and much, much more during these very challenging days, weeks, and months of the pandemic, often at the cost of their own physical, mental, and emotional health and the health and well-being of their families. And whereas we recognize that with, when no one else could be there with our loved ones during the pandemic, nurses were there. And whereas nursing is both a calling that is deeply personal and a professional that is often under-recognized and underappreciated until one actually needs their services. And now thereof, the Grant County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 23 as Grant County Nurses Recognition Month. Encompassing both National Nurses Day on May 6 and National Nurses Week from May 6 to May 12, thus expanding our heartfelt recognition for our local nurses for the entire month of May. We call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Grant County to take the time to express your sincere gratitude to nurses, not just during the month of May, but each and every time you have contact with a nurse or someone who aspires to be a nurse and who is studying to be a nurse. I'd like to make a, I'd like to approve that we make a motion to approve the proclamation.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a second, I have a motion by Commissioner Medina, a second by Commissioner Brown. Do we have any discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So nurses? Just want to thank all our nurses. I really appreciate what you do for this community and, you know, even for people that are coming out from, from other communities into Grant County. You have a very difficult job, and I really appreciate what you guys do. Thank you very much. Commissioner Medina?
County of Grant proclamation. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of the emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, where the career volunteer engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, the Grant County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through May 27, 2023, to be declared as Emergency Medical Services Week.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proclamation.
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Medina, a second by Commissioner Billings. Do we have any discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You know, I just want to say real brief that I really appreciate also what you guys do. In my past life, you have no idea, sitting next to a highway street, a house, praying that you guys would get there soon, and you guys always were there. So I really appreciate everything you do and what you do for, for our community, for our law enforcement, that sometimes we find ourselves in a difficult position and how, you know, they feel once they see you arrive or see your light. So I really thank you for everything that you do, and I appreciate that very much. And I'm sure every law enforcement officer, probably in the nation, appreciates exactly what you do because you guys take on a lot and see a lot. So thank you. So moving on to the next item of the agenda is going to be presentation. We have a presentation for our fiscal year 2022 audit report. Ms. Gray.
Good morning. I'm Debbie Gray with Kriegel Gray Shaw CPA firm in Las Cruces. And we performed the audit for the year ended June 30, 2022, for the county. And so I'm briefly going to present that report to you. And if you have questions, please ask them. On page two of the report is our audit opinion. This opinion says that the financial statements were fairly presented in accordance with the accounting principles. Then on page five begins the financial statements. This is the statement of net position included in the government-wide financial statements. Government-wide financial statements show all activities of the county altogether, all types of activities, and all assets and liabilities, both long-term and short-term. That schedule shows the county having a total assets of $153 million. Page six, the liabilities and net position portion of that same statement. And it shows the county with a net position or equity, if you will, of $98 million. On page seven is the statement of activities normally thought of as an income statement. And it shows the county's, the government activities as well as the component unit in summary, which is the Hila Regional Medical Center. The government activity shows total government primary expenditures of $28 million. And then it shows the resources or revenues associated with providing those services, which are charges for services, operating grants and contributions, and capital grants and contributions. charges for services, operating grants and contributions, and capital grants and contributions. And that nets with expenditures showing that the county then still needed another $11 million to finish providing those services. And so at the bottom, we have what we call general revenues, which is the property taxes and other types of tax that come into the county for use for those purposes. And then it shows change in net position or net income of $8 million, $8.1 million. And you can see the component unit summary over to the side as well, which is $10 million. Page eight is the general, shows the fund statements, or the governmental fund statements of the county, so this is activities like you're used to seeing when you're talking about budget to actuals, except that they're modified accrual. So it shows the general fund, which is made up of multiple different activities, and then it shows a major fund, which is corrections fund, and that's by calculation, whether it is determined major, and then it shows all other governmental funds, which we call non-major, and that's a calculation, numbers calculation, based on size. And then it gives you the total governmental funds for the county. Page nine is a reconciliation from this fund statement to the statement we first looked at, which was the government-wide statements. The difference between the two is essentially long-term assets and long-term liabilities. In the fund statements, we don't carry the long-term assets, nor the long-term liabilities. Page 10 is the income statement for the fund basis accounting for governmental funds, and it shows the county with a total net changes in fund balance, or your net income, of $3.7 million. Page 11, again, is a reconciliation to get from the government-wide statements to the fund statements, and again, it's anything that's associated with long-term assets or liabilities that shows up on this schedule as a reconciling item, to get from one position to another. Page 12 is the general fund budget to actual schedules. These schedules are on the cash basis, so it's cash in, cash out. You see the total revenues, total expenditures, the budget associated with each line item, and then a variance. The county is required by law to stay within its total budgeted expenditures, and you can see from this schedule that the county did that. They had a favorable variance of $2.3 million. Page 13 is another budget schedule for a special revenue fund corrections, which is the other major fund, and it shows the same type of thing, and also shows that the county stayed within its legally mandated budget, and had a favorable variance of $354 million. Page 14 is the custodial funds. Basically, these are funds that come to the county, and the county acts as a fiduciary, taking in the funds and distributing the funds, predominantly its property tax collected for other governments. Then on page 16 begins the notes to the financial statements. It'll provide the reader with additional information about the financial statements, how things are counted for, what's included in a section or not. Lots of information. Then on page 63, after the notes. These are the, what we call, required supplemental information, required by the accounting standards. In this case, it is the net pension liability schedules and the net OPEB liability schedules for para and for the retiree healthcare plans that the county participates in on a statewide basis. So it shows the county's position in that plan as far as what liability the county, is the county's portion of that liability to fund that plan completely. Then, following on, on page 72 is the next section of the report. This section provides all the non-major or smaller funds in detail, so it shows each fund that you all are accustomed to seeing on a budget-to-actual basis or operation basis. So it shows each fund of the county, both the assets and liabilities and equity, as well as the income statements for each, and those are all in here, for special revenue funds, capital projects funds, and debt service funds. And then there's also a detailed schedule for each of the rural fire department funds, which begins on page 80. Then on page 96 is some additional schedules required by our stated audit rule, which they ask for us to provide additional information for the report, and so things like pledged collateral schedules, schedules of actual cash bank accounts, and the type of accounts that are held, and the reconciliation of the property tax rolls from beginning of the year to the end, as well as a 10-year property tax schedule showing the current year levied, collected, remaining to be collected, and the same information for the prior nine years summarized, for each entity that the county collects for. There are some additional schedules in this group that I won't go through unless someone has a question. And then on page 104, we have what we call the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards, or the CFA schedule. This shows the county's expenditures of federal funds. So if the county has more than $750,000 in expenditures of federal funds, it requires additional audit work, and we call that a single audit, and what that requires is that we do a risk assessment of all programs, and decide which programs we will test specific compliance with federal requirements. And so that's what is encompassed in this report, and this is the schedule showing you what those expenditures for all programs were for federal. So the county expended $4.2 million in federal funds during the fiscal year. Page 107 is the Internal Control and Compliance Report, or what in the accounting world is called the Yellow Book Report, and this is the report where we test internal controls during the audit to see if they're, one, designed appropriately to safeguard assets, and, two, are they being implemented, or have they been implemented, and are they working as they are designed? And so, once we finish that, then we may or may not have findings. In this case, the county had one finding, and that was with regard to cash reconciliations. The system that's currently being utilized by the county is an old accounting system, old beta system, and the cash reconciliation program is difficult at best. And so we've pointed out that we've, and there was a material adjustment needed during the audit to correct that information, and so that's the reason for the finding, which is actually on page 113. And so basically, we're recommending that the county get additional training, maybe get an update to the software, and work at, you know, resolving the issues related to this process. Then on page, I'm sorry, I'm going to jump back over here to the other report, what we call the single audit report. On page 109 is the report on the federal programs we tested for compliance, and the county did not have any findings with regard to that. The county did a good job of complying with the requirements for the federal government funding. Page 112 is a summary of all the audit results, so you can see that the county had an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, that's the first thing it says, which again means that it's in accordance with the accounting standards. It talks about the internal control reporting, which was the report, the first report, the second report we looked at for internal control and compliance, and we did have one material weakness. There was also significant deficiency, which was related to the component unit, which is in this report. And there were no non-compliance issues that were material to the financial statements. Internal control over major programs, you can see that there were no findings with regard to that, like I said, the county managed those, and managed those programs in accordance with the requirements. Then it tells you which programs we audited for federal compliance, and they were the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, the formula grants for rural areas, the transportation or Cory Caminos grant, and then the schools and roads cluster. And then following that is the findings, and of course, we talked about the one on page 113, which is cash reconciliations. The one on page 114 is related to the component unit or Hila Regional Medical Center. And then we have one on page 116, which the audit report was late for a couple of different reasons. It's due December 1st. The report was late for a couple of reasons. One was ours, continuing staffing issues, which I guess everybody in the country is feeling these days, working really hard to alleviate that. And then the other one was a very new and large accounting process that had to occur during the year for leases. It required a lot of, a lot of time to implement, and so we worked with the county to make sure we got that implemented, and so that delayed us as well. And then of course, the component unit also had the same issues trying to get their report out, so that, we can't reissue until they're complete. And that's all I have, unless there's some questions.
Commissioner, do we have any questions? Commissioner Brown?
First, let me ask you, do you understand that the firm is at the end of this portion of the county this year?
Yes, we have, we are at the end of a three-year contract. The state audit, state audit rule allows the firm to do the audit for eight consecutive years. We've done six, so we could technically do two others. There is another issue, and I will, our firm is merging with another firm. Actually, we're signing documents next week, and that new firm is Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, which is a national firm throughout the south, southern part of the United States, and because of that merger, we will now be allowed to do the audit for another eight. So if that were to happen, I mean, we have to provide a proposal.
A cynical person like me, that was a loophole, but congratulations.
No, it's not. Wasn't on purpose, but yeah.
Right. Okay, well then I won't say thanks and see you some other time, we'll see you next year. I have a, my first question, there are a number of funds, you know, when you break out the specific funds-
Yes.
-that ended negative.
Yes.
Is that a problem?
It's, yes and no. You don't want to see that, but what happens is, most special revenue funds in particular, and even capital projects funds, they will receive funding for projects, or they receive specific fundings for their purpose, but a lot of the time, that funding is on a reimbursement basis, so they may run negative, and then the general fund, under that circumstance, provides funding temporarily until they receive that reimbursement, and that's usually the cause of that.
So I suppose why this strikes me as different is, I'm accustomed to doing temporary inter-fund transfers to cover those.
Right.
We don't do that in county government?
Some governments do, it becomes a real quagmire if you have a lot going on, money moving back and forth constantly.
It's a good word for it.
Right. So, we just note that in the financial statements, when we come into audit, it'll show a negative cash position, but the cash is a pooled cash circumstance, so in that circumstance, they're just using another fund's cash, which in this case, in most cases, is general fund. And so then we show that in the report as a due-to, due-from at the end of the year, so you'll note that they don't have negative cash, but they do have a due-to general fund.
And we didn't have any funds whose deficits were not covered by expected reimbursements, as far as you know?
As far as I know.
Okay. Thanks. I'm asking her though. Let's see, I think I answered my own questions in a couple of cases. The, I guess, you know, we'll ask the hospital this as well, but I think we were hoping that the late audit for the component unit would not be present this year, but Howard, do you think it will not be present next year?
Well, I don't do the hospital, so I have a difficult time answering that question.
Yeah, that's not fair.
But I know how things are in the environment of trying to get staffing and work, fill positions, so.
So, the last two questions are really kind of the same. You have adjustments that were required due to lack of cash reconciliation, and in the case of the component unit, due to improper tracking of fixed asset values. I can't tell if those adjustments, what effect they had, did they go up or down in terms of what we were reporting? So, for example, the only one I actually care about is our own county money, the almost $30,000-
Yeah.
-that had to be adjusted. Did fund cash go down as a result, or up?
I can't remember. It went down? Yeah.
Okay. Which is the only direction that would have caused me concern.
Right, of course, yeah. And we did extensive work on the reconciliation to make sure that we didn't feel there was any issues.
That was my next question.
So we did look at several, and we re-reconciled the whole month, or the whole year. This, you know, this has been ongoing for several years in a row, probably back to when we began the audit, which was six years ago. It's always been an issue, it's just this year it got big enough that we had to report it as a finding. But there's a lot, the reconciliation program within the software is extremely difficult, I think, because the county, from what I understand, is on a beta version of the software, and never really has converted to the full-blown, and that is something that's desperately needed to be corrected, so.
And now for management, are we correcting that? Thank you, that's all I have.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Edward, did you have a question?
So, and I also have a comment. So, the hospital is actually late because of the reconciliation of the critical access of the cost report, and my recollection is because the information that we need on the cost report comes from CMS, that we don't have any control over that. And so that it could continue on, we could continue to see that as a finding. So, on page 96, it shows that we have ten, a little over $10 million worth of deposits at Wells Fargo Bank, and then it says total uninsured public funds. Can you talk about that a little bit? What is that?
Yes, yes. So, the bank ensures that deposit are up to $250,000 for demand deposit accounts, and an additional 250 for time deposit accounts. The county didn't have any time deposit accounts at year-end, so that remains that there's an uninsured portion of 9.8 million. And then there's a state law requirement that requires that the county collateralize 50% of that excess, which was 4.9 million, and it has to be collateralized with securities of US governments, and so you can see that that's pretty much what has been done, and it's collateralized by the bank. And so this shows that they actually collateralized 100% of the uninsured, which is great, but that's not the requirement for the state of New Mexico. Certain types of federal funds require 100% collateral, none of which the county carries, it's like housing funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to the next item of the agenda is going to be a Gila Regional Medical Center report. It's going to be done by interim CNO Cynthia Lewis.
Good morning, thank you. So I'm reporting just a brief report on behalf of Gila Regional Medical Center. Our day's cash are, this is from the reporting period of March, because we haven't reported to the board for April. But our day's cash are up from 109 in February to 111. Reported that we had a 5K loss in, in that month, which is about a break-even month. And we anticipate a good continued trend to have a good fourth quarter. Any questions for me?
That was brief, but can you, I've been asking for a five-year plan on the infrastructure. Do you know if they started that yet?
Can you restate your question, please?
Okay, I've been asking for a five-year plan, looking at our infrastructure at the hospital. Do you know if that has been started?
I believe that it has, but I can't speak to the detail. I would, I will ask Margie and Patrick to give you an update on that when they're back. Will that suffice?
That'd be fine, thank you.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
Ms. Lewis, can we have the director of maintenance come up and give an update on the steam tank issue?
Could you repeat that either way?
Can you ask the director of maintenance to come up and give a update on the sterilization?
Sure.
Please.
Thank you. Thanks for the proclamation recognition, too.
Thank you, guys.
Good morning. My name is Nick Dacus. I am Director of Facilities Maintenance and EBS for Gila Regional Medical Center. So a quick update on our steam issue that we're having as of right now. We're in the process of having that new tank built. It's coming from Superior Boiler out of Hutchinson, Kansas. We are looking at a date of the 23rd for the completion of the tank. Hopefully have it on-site by the 25th around that area. So we're looking that week, I believe it's 22nd through the, I apologize. So it should be the week of the 26th, or 22nd through the 26th. And we're hoping to have that, that completed by the end of that week. I'm in the process of working with our materials management to acquire vendors for the plumbing side of it so that we can make sure it's installed correctly and up to code, whatever that needs to be done.
Do we have any questions, commissioners? Commissioner Edwards?
Could you talk just a little bit about what we're doing in order to have sterilized instruments in the hospital?
I believe this is more Cynthia's realm for that one. I can speak a little bit on our side of it. We have provided two drivers out of the facility side of it to help out with mobilization and moving and transport of the surgical equipment back and forth. I believe what you're using, if you can correct me, TRC as of right now. And then in the process of working with Globe to provide sterilized equipment for the community, for the surgical center, to make sure that we're providing the best service we can until this issue is corrected.
I ask because I just want to acknowledge the extra effort that the staff is putting out in order to make this happen, in order to keep the surgery suite open and going. And to also acknowledge the hard work that your, that you and your staff have done to get this going. At one point, we'd heard that it was going to be 14 weeks or more before we'd have this issue resolved. And I also just want to thank the hospital in TRC and Globe and Safford for their incredible partnership in helping us keep things going, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, if I'm not putting you in a bad position, could you shed any light on the infrastructure assessment or the infrastructure plan, if there is any, and where that's at?
Being as new that I am to the position, I haven't been able to actually work with Patrick on that and start coordinating all that, so I have no knowledge of that as of right now.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Medina.
Nick, Cynthia, I'm like Commissioner Edwards, thank your people. I didn't realize the drive was what it entails. I mean, you're talking 12, 13 hours round trip. And after I got the opportunity to talk with a few of the individuals that are driving, thank them. Because it's a lot of work to go sit somewhere for five hours and then turn around and drive back in the middle of the night. But thank them, we really appreciate their efforts.
Will do.
Now, I just want to say thank you and, and just to let you know a little bit of what Commissioner Edwards said. We, or at least I have, and I think I can speak for all the commissioners up here, but we are looking for a five-year plan for your infrastructure. I know you just got here, you're doing a great job from what I'm hearing from everybody. We appreciate that, but we need to get something going so we can help you and, and help us help you. Because that hospital has been, was built in the early 80s. So I know we're going to be having problems. And I'm hoping HealthTech is listening to me, that we really need a five-year plan to understand where we need to head with that hospital, because it is a county-owned hospital. So I'd really appreciate just letting you know, this is what we've been asking for. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, that's it? Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Cynthia or any?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to next item of the report is going to be the elected official reports. Madam Clerk? No report. Madam Assis, or any report?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just have a couple of things really quick. As you all know, the last day of the protest period ended May 2nd. And as of right now, I have all the appraisers working out on the field completing that project right now. Next week, I will send one more out and then we should be complete out in the field. And data entry should at least take about a week or so to finish. The next big project that I'm waiting on is estate assessed properties on the protested and unprotested values that I would have to enter in. And then at that time, then I can start on the certified values. But that's all that I have, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? No questions, thank you. Moving on to the next elected official treasurer's report, Ms. Khan.
Good morning, Chairman Ponse and Commissioners. Before I use the tax maintenance report, the total taxes collected for the month of April for the 2022 tax rule is $1,620,509.48, which left the county at a collection percentage of 80.96% for '22. For the total 2022 tax rule so far, $10,731,235.18 of taxes have been collected and $2,523,195.68 uncollected. The total percentage collected for the total 10-year collection as of March 31st, or April 30th, 2022 is 94.22%, of which a total of $114,607,422.76 of taxes were collected. That leaves a total uncollected balance of taxes of $7,024,806.69. I did do a just pre-forecast of property taxes collected as of yesterday, May 10th. As of, that was the final day for property owners to come in and pay property taxes. And as of yesterday, we went up to a 95.06% of our projected 10-year collection of taxes. That leaves $115,657,196.68 collected, which leaves an outstanding 10-year taxes of $6,118.09 outstanding. That's not on the report. That's just the forecasted amount of taxes as collected as per yesterday. I did last month start my manufactured home collections. Mobile home owners or manufactured homeowners that have taxes due did receive a, a letter from me letting them know that they were passed due on their collections. I have seen a lot of people coming in and paying those and arranging payment arrangements with me. We do have the property tax division here at the county and they're doing their, they're working onsite here at the county currently. They were here last week and they started working on our delinquent properties. They did their blitz report very fast as last Friday they did mail their delinquent letters. And I've been having a lot of people coming in and trying to get those taken care of and talking to, to property tax regarding committed promise-to-pay so they can come in and get those finalized. We're finally going to go through with our GovPro's conversion. It looks like next week they're going to be working offsite and, and working with IT on getting that finalized for us. They will be coming in next Wednesday, May 17th. I'm looking at closing the office in the morning for training, because that's a new product that is going to be coming in the office. And we're going to need training on using our new terminals and reporting batches so we can get those done, so we can start using the program. I do want to remind everybody that they do have that e-statement option where they can get their property taxes and notice evaluation through, through e-statement. So they can just call the treasurer's office or the assessor's office, anybody interested in signing up, and we can help get that process started for all property owners. I want to thank my staff for all their hard work. First half and second half collections remain constantly busy on just getting those property taxes collected. And I'm just excited for '23 coming. I will, before I stand for any questions, I am working heavily with the manager's office with finance director Vazquez and manager Webb on get, making sure with our audit, on making sure that there's communication going. I've done an intense, intensive internal audit with the system, looking at income statement, journal accounts. I'm also looking at unclaimed property where I'm communicating that with Linda so we can get some of that cleared out of our bank reconciliation. So it, it's been a lot of work. I, I do some of that, I do a little bit of the collections. So I, I have my hands full, but I absolutely love what I'm doing and for the betterment of Grant County and for our taxpayers. I will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Edwards?
Can a property owner in Grant County go someplace on the web and see if they're current on their taxes?
They can go to the, the website, the treasurer ego web, and put in their account number and do a search, just like the assessor's office and, and the clerk's office, to see if they have anything due. Sometimes, I, I personally don't think it's user-friendly, which I'm hoping that we go through the upgrade on getting our website upgraded, which would be so much more user-friendly. But a lot of taxpayers have told, just call and we help them from there.
Okay, great, thanks.
Good question, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Ponse.
Moving on to a, next item is going to be approval of the minutes. I'd like to make a motion for, to approve the minutes for April 11th, 2023 work session minutes, April 13th, 2023 regulator meeting minutes, and April 25th, 2023 special meeting minutes. On April 25th, we did have an executive session. And just for the record, only items on the agenda were discussed and no, no action taken.
I'll second that.
Firsted, I guess. I think you requested a motion?
No, I, I made the motion. I made the motion. And so I made the motion, I have a second by Commissioner Edwards. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, the reason I made it is because of that one piece there. Moving on to next item is going to be financial reports. It's going to be consideration of May 5th, 2023 expenditure report.
Is it okay to do all these three together?
Yeah, if you want, we can, we can do that.
So I'll make a motion to approve the May 5th, 2023 expenditure report, the fiscal year 2023 quarter, quarterly financial report ending March 31st, 2023, and the fiscal year 2023 largest tax quarterly report ending March 31st, 2023, as presented.
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Edwards, I have a second by Commissioner Billings. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Under new business, if fiscal year 2024 preliminary budget discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the fiscal year 2024 preliminary budget.
We can't.
Oh, we're discussing, oh, we're discussing, sorry.
It's a discussion.
I have one item.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
This budget, I believe, does not include increasing elected officials' salaries, as has been requested by some of the elected officials, is that right?
No, sir, because at this point, everyone is within their term and it's not legal to increase an elected official salary. You can increase chief deputies, but you cannot increase an elected official salary at this point.
Oh, we can't increase chief deputies beyond 95%?
You can, you can set that by resolution, however you choose to do so.
Oh, I thought the 95% was imposed on us.
No, sir.
Commissioner Brown, and I believe that we're at 90% for the chief deputies, correct, right now? So there is no...
So there's room for a resolution to increase that?
Right. For the chief deputy.
If you wanted to increase elected official salaries, that would be effective after the next election.
Right, so the statute says that any elected official is not eligible for any sort of salary increase during midterm. So that means once their term was started, that you can't. And I did verify that, just in case I was misinterpreting the statute, I did have the attorney verify that for me.
Well, thanks, thanks for verifying, because I guess I always thought that referred only to the people who were making the vote. But it's any elected official.
Because if you remember, like me and Commissioner Salas, when we came in, we went to that next level.
Yeah, I remember that.
Then when you guys got re-elected, you went up.
That's why I thought it was us, but not necessarily other elected officials. Exactly because of that.
It's any county elected official.
I think those were my only questions, thinking.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I just want to say that I really appreciate the discussions that we've had up till now on the budget. I appreciate you giving us all the information on the acronym that I can't remember now, LCTAF or whatever that is. And I appreciate your, you and your staff being proactive on how to get some things done with that funding. So I, I'm really pleased with how the budget process went this year, so thank you.
Speaking of the LTCF, is that going to be folded into the budget we approve?
Okay. It's going to be the local assistance, tribal consistency. It's gonna be the local assistance tribal consistency fund, I wrote it down, cause I can't remember it. Anything else commissioners? I do have one question, um, are we gonna be able to do some type of work session consider, then, or are we pretty much done?
I assume we were pretty much done, but we can, we can do one. We had intended on preliminary budget approval at your special meeting later this month, but if you would like something in between then or before then, we can definitely do that.
I, I think you explained pretty much uh, what we needed to, the way I feel, I don't know how the other commissioners feel. I would like to maybe down the road set some time after the budget to discuss some other things, but for right now, I'm happy if you guys are happy with, with what was presented. Cause I think it went very well, so I appreciate that. Thank you, I guess after the fiscal year starts, we head down the road, I would love to, to sit down again and look at some stuff, uh, you know, but uh, I'm also looking at, you know, a question, um, we ended up okay with uh, Mister Baca's request, right, to add his personnel?
Yes, we included that in there, so the recap sheet that Linda's prepared for you does include that.
It does include that.
So it included, it included all of their, uh, the requests.
Okay, I'm just making sure because I've seen that everything we've been talking about lately has been IT, IT, and I know I joke with him about the money, but you know, all the work that we're putting in and, and some of the things coming in, I, I think it, it, it just makes sense to do that instead of contracting down the road or having to do anything like that, so I appreciate that, thank you.
And, and the other thing I would just like to reiterate that, um, this does include the estimated calculation to bring the positions that are identified in the first draft of a compensation study that were below minimum. Um, they have shot me a number for um, to deal with the compression issue and I'm gonna have to get creative with that because we can't afford that, so.
The what?
The compression issue, where, you know, you bring everyone to the minimum and then you've got compression between mid and mid, and so we have to figure out a way to, to uh, address that compression issue and so I'm waiting for that spreadsheet, I'll have to get creative with that, so.
Ian, that number uh, was higher than you were even freezing in over six years as you had suggested?
Commissioner Medina.
The step back county manager, when do you expect to see that?
Sometime in June, they will be here to present it. Um, I'd like to have figures uh, wrapped up in the preliminary budget for you, but it will depend on how we look at that, um, that second component. So we've addressed the bringing everyone to the minimum, there were fifty-eight positions below the minimum. Um, so that's addressed right now, um, but to work on that other piece is gonna take me a little bit of time. Um, I will do my best to make sure that I can get that wrapped in somehow. We, I can present that to you at the special meeting and, and how we address that, or have a plan moving forward on how we, we, we move them through that. But right now, that initial number, number was a little shocking.
I wanna also thank Linda, I spent some time last night looking over this, over the budget last night, and it was very, put together very well. I really appreciate it, everything was, was well spoken. Um, the county manager accepted a late phone call last night, a couple of questions last night that I just had to get off, so thank you guys so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, anything else commissioner? No? Thank you. So that ends our discussion and uh, next item's gonna be consideration of asset deletion transfer request number seven.
Sir Chairman, approval of asset deletion transfer request number seven?
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Medina, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to agreements, consideration of agreement number A dash twenty-three dash eleven. It's memorandum of understanding between the county of Grant and Sixth Judicial District Court for pre-trial services.
Mister Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve uh, agreement number A dash twenty-three dash eleven as presented.
I'll go ahead and second that. So I have a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by myself, and do we have any discussion? You good? All right, no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your patience.
Uh, motion carries. Moving on to the next item is gonna be consideration of agreement A dash twenty-three dash twelve. Loan agreement between New Mexico Finance Authority and Grant County, New Mexico for the benefit of Pino Salto's Volunteer Fire Department, those Greggo substation, in the amount of one million, et cetera.
Eighty-five thousand more or less, make a motion approve.
A second. So I have a motion by Commissioner Medina, I have a second by Commissioner Edwards. Do we uh, have any discussion?
Just a quick comment, um, the Pino Salto Fire Department is actually doing good for that area, it's been a long time coming, they need fire protection and those type of services, I'm really happy for them.
Yeah, we've been talking about that since I got elected the first time.
We talked since I worked for the Fire Department, it's not been that long.
Any further discussion commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to the next item is consideration of agreement A dash twenty-three dash thirteen renewal to commercial lease between Grant, between county of Grant and Mountain Ridge Hardware LLC.
Chairman, approval of this uh, renewal?
I'll second.
Ian, I, I did one question during the session. I, I see the uh, monthly payment is increasing to a dollar per square foot, but I don't remember what it's increasing from. Do you?
It's roughly nineteen thousand square feet, so it'll be another nineteen thousand extra dollars, I can't tell you what it is off the top of my head, it's I don't remember the per square footage cost.
Okay.
It's just written into the lease agreement that if those, if, if the renewal. Yeah, if, if the renewal is done, they, um, they pay an extra dollar, if those renewals are exercised, but.
Yeah. Okay, I might be, was it roughly ten thousand a month before that? It must have been more.
It's more than that.
Yeah, it must have been more.
And so this lease agreement, we have the fee and then we have common area maintenance charges which go back and forth. It's a complex lease agreement, so it's not straightforward that they pay.
Got it.
So there, there's two components to it.
They're okay, right, with whatever we're presenting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I have one more question, so we are actually agreeing today for two, two additional terms for a total of ten, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? No? Um, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to uh, resolutions, we consideration of resolution R dash twenty-three dash twenty-seven. Uh, adopting uh, travel policy and procedures relating to reimbursement and travel per day.
Chairman, approval of resolution R twenty-three dash twenty-seven?
I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Edwards, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to next item is gonna be consideration of resolution R twenty-three, R dash twenty-three dash twenty-eight, New Mexico Department of Transportation Fiscal Year twenty twenty-four. Transportation Project Fund Application Authorization for Hamilton Bridge Project.
Mister Chair, I move that we accept resolution R twenty-three twenty-eight for approval of the Hamilton Bridge Project.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Billings, a second by Commissioner Edwards, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We have moved the next item for after the executive session, so moving on to W. Consideration of resolution R dash twenty-three dash thirty-one, resolution and proclamation of special. I skipped what?
You. Got the page.
Oh, yeah. Yes, I did.
What do you got against my, uh, against the chair?
No, I turned the page too quick, I guess. Okay, moving on to the next one, consideration of resolution R dash twenty-three dash twenty-nine. New Mexico Department of Transportation Fiscal Year twenty twenty-four Transportation Project Fund Application Authorization for Ridge Road Phase Two Construction Project.
Chairman, approval of R twenty-three dash twenty-nine?
Second.
I was gonna second it since I made that mistake, but no, I'm joking. So I have a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Billings, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we skipped the V, moving on to W. Consideration of resolution R dash twenty-three dash thirty-one. Resolution and proclamation of special delection concerning an amendment to ordinance number twelve dash zero-three uh, dash repealing sunset clause from countywide emergency communications and emergency medical and behavioral services tax increment.
Mister Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number R dash twenty-three dash thirty-one.
I'll second, so I have a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Ponse, do we have any discussion? Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, and I'm sure I should ask this on Tuesday, I'm sure it's focused somewhere else. I wonder if you could explain the relationship of this resolution to the ordinance, cause I know we're having to put something up for an election related to this, how can we just do this part with the resolution?
Probably, I, probably I'll have to have Lenny's to help me with this, but, um, so we have to uh, reenact the ordinance, so that's down on item Y.
Right.
But we, but because this increment is voter referendum, we have to issue a reg- a resolution and proclamation to um, put it back in front of the voters to repeal the sunset clause and have this increment continue on, gonna get that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion commissioners? Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
I'm with approval, with that explanation of R twenty-three dash thirty-one.
I think we already had a motion.
Oh, my gosh. I'm just gonna stay quiet.
I think, didn't Commissioner Edwards make the motion?
Yeah.
I second.
Thank you.
Then we discuss.
And we discuss, so now it's time to vote, unless there's any further discussion. No, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, resolution approved. Now, let me find where I'm at. X, yeah, consideration of resolution R dash twenty-three dash thirty-two, acceptance and approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two audit.
Mister Chairman, approval of R twenty-three dash thirty-two?
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Edwards, do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to the next uh, item is consideration of resolution R dash twenty-three dash thirty-three. Notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-three dash zero-five. And uh, ordinance amended ordinance twelve dash zero-three dash repealing sunset clause from countywide emergency communications and emergency medical and behavioral health services tax increment, so I'll make a motion to approve that resolution, I have a second by Commissioner Medina, do we have any discussion? Just another.
I told you, keep my mouth shut.
Just another step to get to that next piece, so commis- uh, county manager Webb.
So this is just, um, this is the resolution of the notice of intent to adopt the ordinance, so the ordinance is expiring, we have to re, we have to reenact, we have to do the ordinance all over again, so it's the same process as any other ordinance. But um, what we're doing with this ordinance is repealing the sunset clause, which is the most important piece.
And so there will actually be an ordinance hearing.
Et cetera, et cetera, at the next meeting, right, we're having a special meeting at the end of May to do this?
In June.
Oh, in June, okay.
Okay, so now my mouth is open again. And I don't know why this didn't strike me as odd when we discussed this earlier, but we're having a special election. The special election is specifically to repeal the sunset clause.
No, the election is to reenact the increment of GRTs. We have to have the ordinance in place saying that we're repealing it and it will not have a sunset clause. The election is to, for the voters to vote yes or no, whether or not they want to extend the it, it's a, it's a two-piece process to get it done because it requires voter referendum.
Yeah, so the election is basically calling that question to the voters, um, to continue with the, the bond?
Or the GRT.
The GRT.
It was that question that I read.
And that comes after we adopt the ordinance.
Yes.
So the resolution repeals it, right?
No, that is.
Oh, no.
We're amending, we're amending the existing ordinance to, to repeal the sunset clause, which is not necessary, which should have never been in there to begin with.
Right.
So that's what, so you will have a new ordinance, um, that says, you know, that we intend to enact this increment of GRT without the sunset.
Without the sunset.
So this one's.
Oh, go ahead.
No, well, this one's just basically saying that we wanna adopt that ordinance, repealing the sunset, sunset clause. So once that's done, the public hearing, then it can be presented to the voters without the sunset clause. So there's a couple of different layers going through this. First, we have to have a resolution that we're okay with it, then we have to go to the ordinance saying we're gonna repeal the sunset clause to take it out, so if the voters approve it, it can just continue forward, right?
Yes, and so Marisa has looked at all of this and her and Liz have provided um, amazing guidance for me to understand this, Ben has gone through it, looked at it, and every step of the way, we have consulted with uh, tax and revenue department to make sure that we are doing everything correctly.
Well, then I'm just gonna trust you, cause I gotta say it seems like an extra layer to me.
Well, there are a lot of layers to this, and um, you don't wanna mess it up.
So as long as we're on the topic, just for the sake of the public, would you just sort of outline then the rest of the process?
The rest of the process, so, okay, so once uh, you uh, adopt the amendment to the ordinance, then um, there are several steps that have to go in place um, prior to the special election. Um, the special election is, is a all mail-in election which will take place on August the twenty-second.
When you say take place on August twenty-second, does that mean the mail-in ballots are due on August twenty-second?
Election day, yes.
That's election day, so the ballot, oh, and how, and they'll go out three weeks ahead or two weeks?
Uh, we've got our calendar going and um, normally we get them out, but. Yeah, we have, we have specific dates that we need to follow to, um, I could get back to you with an actual calendar date, we're working on calendars now.
Okay, so we'll do the ordinance in June that makes the election possible. Then somewhere two to three weeks approximately before August twenty-second, the mail-in ballots will go out, they're due on August twenty-second.
So this is probably a little confusing to you, um, with the resolution and proclamation being on the same agenda, but Ben and I did not want to have any hiccups, any issues, so that gives us ample time to make sure that we meet all of the advertising guidelines and make sure that um, we don't put the clerk in a crunch, so she has certain deadlines. And so um, after this meeting, we'll know, um, we can formalize our calendar, so we'll start from the August twenty-second date and move backwards.
We can begin our process once we get this taken care of, and then we'll start our process, which we've already.
I've completely lost track of where we're at now.
I, I was gonna ask.
Yeah, we've got a motion, uh, Chairman Ponse, and seconded by.
Any further discussion? It's a complicated process. Okay, you good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, so here, here's where we're at. If I can have a motion to recess as a Grant County Board of Commissioners and convene as a Grant County Health Care Claims Board.
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Billings, I have a second by Commissioner Brown, do we have any discussion? So a motion by Commissioner Billings, I have a second by Commissioner Brown. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, so we are the Health Care Claims Board. Under, items under this is consideration of the April twenty-twenty-three indigent medical claims for recom- recommended approval in the amount of two hundred twenty-five dollars and ninety-two cents.
Move to approve, second.
So a motion by Commissioner Billings, uh, second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to the next item, AA, consideration of April twenty-twenty-three indigent burial claim for recommended approval in the amount of six hundred dollars.
I'll move that we approve this presentation.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Billings. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. If I can have a motion to adjourn as a Grant County Health Care Claim Board and reconvene as a Grant County Board of Commissioners.
Some, second.
So a motion by Commissioner Billings, second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, we're back as Grant County Commissioners. We have moved the next item also to the end of, after our executive session. So now commissioners, I'd like to have a motion to huh? I thought I heard somebody. Sometimes I just get in my, it was a door squeaking, anyway. Like to have a motion to go into executive session accordance, in accordance with NMSA nineteen-seventy-eight ten dash fifteen dash one, H nine, H eight, and H seven.
Some, second.
So a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Billings. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, we'll be entering executive session. Uh, Madam Clerk, could I have a roll call, please?
Uh, yes, Chairman Ponce, Commissioners Edwards, Billings, Medina, and Brown are now aware that you are in executive session.
Yes.
Yes.
Did you just?
I heard you.
Did you hear him?
Yes.
Yes.
Who?
Who are you looking for, me?
Oh.
You got everybody? Okay, we'll be in executive session, thank you. Could uh, have a um, motion to come out of executive session. So a motion by Commissioner Brown, and a second by Commissioner Medina to come out of executive session, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are out of executive session. If we can go ahead and go back to item V, consideration of Resolution Number R dash twenty-three dash thirty. A resolution appointing members to the Gila Regional Medical Center Governing Board.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to uh, move that we accept Resolution R twenty-three thirty uh, with some um, fill in the blanks and with some changes that I'd like to outline now, and I'll go very slow and ask everyone to correct me if I make a mistake. On the sixth, whereas um, on the first sentence, like to strike the words shall have full, shall have full power and authority and replace those words with shall have the authority to exercise all powers that the county is granted by the HFA. And then at the end of that paragraph six. Sorry.
Slow down.
Okay. And I've got this written down, I can give it to you if you want.
Okay, yeah.
But um, so we would strike the words shall have full power and authority and replace those words with shall have the authority to exercise all powers that the county is granted by the HFA. And then at the end of that, whereas also reference statute section four dash forty-eight B ten.
Can we, can we pause?
Do you want that to be touched for me? B five and ten?
B five and B ten. That paragraph has uh, referenced uh, yeah, both statutes are referenced in that paragraph.
So the issue really that just occurred to me is it actually isn't all the powers, right, because it's not the power to dispose of the assets, not the power to impose a mill levy. There are certain powers we're not giving the board because we can't.
And isn't that covered by saying that the powers are as designated by the?
Except that the way I just heard it, and not the way I heard it before, unfortunately, the way I just heard it was all the powers that the HFA gives the county.
Uh, Mr. Brown, you're right, and I thought, I thought later in that paragraph, it said.
I also thought it said excluding.
It does not exclude in that paragraph.
I did the exact same thing you did.
So, I'll back up and restate that.
Scratch it all out.
The sixth whereas do we want to just leave shall have full power and authority? And just reference the statute?
Let me just take out the word full.
Okay, that's what I prefer to do. Just strike the word full, like the county manager recommended.
So shall have. Go back exactly where it was, in a sense, that the board shall have the power and reference, uh, right, five and ten.
And then reference five and ten.
Repeal.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then um, at the end of the seventh, whereas so it will read, whereas following the appointment of members of the board, Grant County remains the owner of GRMC and the Board of County Commissioners retains power to appoint and replace members of the board, issue bonds, call mill levy elections, levy annual assessments, sell or lease GRMC property, facilities, and operations. I'd like to add, subject to the requirements of the HFA. Comma, and. And then um, now therefore be resolved that A, the Board of County Commissioners hereby appoints seven. And then the fifth change is in B, effective July first, twenty-twenty-three. The Hospital Governing Board, appointed herein, shall be comprised of five voting members.
Seven.
Seven.
Oh, sorry. Seven, thank you, voting members and three ex officio non-voting members.
Plural.
So um, one is the county manager as referenced, the other is the chief of staff and the CEO of GRMC. Uh, the other um, change is down in E. Um, upon appointment, the board shall select from its membership a chair and a secretary. And then uh, going back to C. The board members are appointed as follows. Javier Salas to serve a term from July first, twenty-twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Pat McIntyre to serve a term July first, twenty-twenty-three.
You skipped, Mr. Traeger.
You, you skipped that.
Well, the way it's listed here is weird, but yeah, I can, I can do it that way.
No, he's right.
Oh, because you are quite right, they listed it in an unusual.
Sorry, just keep going the way you are.
It's an unusual class again. Pat McIntyre, uh, term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Will Hawkins, July first, twenty-twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. Seth Traeger, July first, twenty-twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, one-year term. Michael Smith, July first, twenty-twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Fred Fox, July first, twenty-twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, three-year term. And Betty Vega, a three-year term also, ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah.
Is that the end of your motion?
Yes, sir.
Can I have a second?
I'm sorry.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Billings, second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call vote, please? That's.
Um, Chairman Ponce. Uh, question is, um, are you accepting, uh, are you approving Resolution R twenty, R dash twenty-three dash thirty-one? All with all the changes and amendments?
It's.
It's not.
It's not that one, sorry, hold on.
Thirty.
Thirty.
Oh, I went one, thirty, sorry, um, again, R dash twenty-three dash thirty as amended with all the changes?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
No.
Commissioner Billings?
Yes.
Commissioner Medina?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes. No discussion.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, so, closing that out. Gonna be moving on to uh, commissioners' commissioners' reports, um. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank everyone who applied for consideration as a trustee. Given the challenges that we faced over the last seven years, you have to admire the courage it takes to step up and take action on behalf of our, one of our most valuable community assets. My challenge in my no vote is not with who we're appointing to the Board of Trustees, rather, it's who we're not appointing. GRMC leadership has a long history of being overwhelmingly Anglo and underwhelmingly female, which is not in alignment with the demographics of our staff or our community. While incremental progress has been made, given the qualified pool of candidates, I believe we missed an opportunity to make more progress than we did. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Billings?
Yeah, I'm uh, anxious to move forward, I think that um, I sincerely believe that this commission did the right thing when we took governance of the hospital. I believe that, over time, uh, we did a good job with hiring a company that um, brought financial stability and then and then over time, we um, in my opinion, lost our effectiveness and, or um, or it became time that we go back to a Board of Trustees, I I think that time was probably, as Chairman Ponce uh, first indicated, sometime last year, not this year. But we're finally getting there and I'm excited uh, to uh, have a governing board and, and get back to county business. I think it's a, a good board, not um, they're not all the ones that I would have selected out of the pool either, I don't think any one of us got um, exactly the board that we would have individually handpicked, but I appreciate the process and the discussion with the commission. Uh, wanna thank um, the county manager and uh, apologize um, for my eleven o'clock review of the proclamation that led to the last-minute changes this morning. I could have done that a day or two or a week earlier. Uh, but uh, thanks for your patience and um, look forward to moving on with that. I also wanna thank the county staff and uh, from the manager's office, uh, the budget director's office for the uh, process in the budget this year. And all of those who um, got an opportunity from the county to put in their requests and those who uh, were willing to um, take modifications to their requests, just seemed like a really cooperative effort, and I know some questions came up on Tuesday, it's my understanding those were resolved and wanna thank the clerk's office for just being con- uh, I'm sorry, the assessor's office for being congenial with the changes that the, the board had in mind, just seemed like a, a really good process. There's a lot good going on uh, in county government and uh, I could, I could get a lot of thank yous, but I've seen a, a lot of good cooperative work lately and I'm really, really appreciative of that. Uh, that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Billings. Commissioner Brown?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna start by challenging your apology, I, I don't think you should apologize at all, all of us could have reviewed that, and you did. So the fact that it was a little late is uh, I think better than never, as was the case with me. So, thank you for reviewing it, uh, I appreciate that. And uh, I think I wanna reinforce what you said about uh, not having the Board of Trustees that I would have wanted. But respecting the process that we went through and I think if you can say anything about that process, you can say that it was not uh, abbreviated, we gave full consideration to everyone's perspective, uh, and I think hopefully, uh, it'll only get better, uh, in terms of uh, diversity. I think the way we staggered the terms was intentional to help us get to that uh, improve diversity, and we'll see how that goes based on people who apply. I think uh, there's one other thing that's been in the back of my head, uh, the, the budget season has brought this forward, there, there've been I don't know, maybe four or five references to going back to the basics. And I, I don't remember ever going away from the basics, so I'm a little confused about what that means. My hope is that it doesn't mean that we're shying away from making new investments that will pay off. Uh, 'cause I consider that a basic function of government as well. We have significant monies available to us, thanks to the Latkaf and uh, the ARPA, uh, and the regular PIL. And uh, I think that's an opportunity to make investments in new areas, uh, not just basic. Uh, not just the things we've always done, which is what I'm worried about going back to the basics means. So I hope we'll continue to, to look forward and to evaluate investments based on their returns to our residents and to our treasury. Because in some cases, these will be investments that, that will return financial gains. So I just wanted to say that, 'cause I think of her back to basics one time too many for my head. Alright, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Medina?
Um, being the shortest time member of the commission, our county residents, our hospital staff, our hospital administration, they don't realize the amount of work that the commissioners put into the efforts of maintaining that hospital, keeping it going keep it where it's at. Um, I wanna tell the four of you, thank you very much, and include Mr. Salas in that. It was hard work that you guys did and, and you guys, like, you called it a resource or an asset, you kept that asset available for our residents, and I thank you guys for that. I myself, I think we chose a good Board of Trustees, and I think they're gonna move forward well, I think they're gonna do a good job and I'm, stay tuned to see the, the results and I, and then really, you know, really wanna support them and, and just move forward and get this hospital going the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Medina. You, you know, I just wanna go into the uh, you know, I wanna congratulate, you know, the uh, the applicants that were appointed to the Board of Trustees and uh, you're gonna find out, there's a lot of work still to be done. uh, you're gonna find out, there's a lot of work still to be done. And I really appreciate you applying for these positions. You know, this, and I want to thank everyone that applied for, for these positions, and, and I think I echo what the other Commissioners have said also is, is, uh, you know, we, we've had very good applicants. Sometimes as a county commissioner, and, and I'm, you know, I feel it's, it's a, it's a privilege and an honor to serve with the Commissioners I served with, um, that we took this seriously. There was a lot of discussion, and I, I know that the public sitting there seeing our executive session after executive session, but these are not appointments that we take lightly. You know, thi- this has to do with the hospital, the services it provides for a community. And being a Commissioner, this is probably one of the most important things that we do as Commissioners, is, uh, appoint people to different boards. It was a hard decision, you know, for me to say, sit up here and say that I was a hundred percent on, on everything, probably like every other Commissioner, no, I wasn't, but at the end of the day, i- it is what it is. We, we did not take this lightly. Uh, so I really want to thank you and, and, uh, for applying, for putting yourself up here in front of the public and, and giving us your presentation. I really appreciate that, I appreciate our county staff, uh, doing what, uh, they've done and the work they've put into it, our attorneys, and the Commissioners also, I, I really appreciate that. Um, I thank you guys and, uh, know this wasn't an easy process, but the respect and, uh, that we have for each other and the conversations is, is, is great. I, I, I really like that, and, and, uh, we can now hopefully move forward with, with the hospital. You know, for Commissioner Brown, part of the explanation, as far as basic is, and I know I've probably said it the most, you know, when I say basic is that, you know, we have, or at least since I've been here, you know, we haven't had the luck or the fortune that we have now, and we've been lacking some equipment. We've been lacking vehicles, we've been lacking, uh, uh, certain things for our employees. And that's what I mean by basic, is we're finally at a point with our commission, with our county and the money that's come in, that, you know, we, we're able to do what we can for our employees. You know, and, and that's what I mean is, as basic is, do our infrastructure, sort of like we did the, the roof for, for the conference center. Do those things that to me are, are basic things that we do as a commission to keep our county running. That's what I meant by basic. In no way does it mean, and, and my last meeting is, yeah, we probably need to have another meeting to look at other things that we need to do. You know, and that's what was mentioned in the last meeting by me. Uh, I think I mentioned it earlier, maybe after this budget gets going, sitting down, because we all have certain things that we'd like to see done for the county. So the basic part to me is the basics of what can we do for our employees, for our county, to provide better services to our community by giving them things that they have been asking for in the past. I don't know if that explains the basic piece to you, but that's what I mean by basic.
Well, it sounds like you're open to more.
And I have been since our last meeting, saying we need to look at projects, we need to look at other things. But I think right now, i- it's a good start where we're at, with our county and our infrastructure and what we've, you know, looked at and decided, but yes, as Commissioners, I know that we look at, there's other things that need to be done, and once that dust settles, it is time, because our budget process doesn't end just by our vote. You know, to me, our budget process continues through the whole year, and we can come up with other ideas and other things that we may look to, to go forward with. That's what I meant by basic.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Other than that?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Well, I was just gonna adjourn it, try that out, but hey, we have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Edwards, a second by Commissioner Brown, and the discussion is none, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.